Okay, it being three oh one, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Ottawa Police Services Board to order for February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to recognize that Ottawa is located on the unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishnapec Host Nation. The peoples of the Algonquin Anishnapec Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors the people and the land of the Algonquin Anishnapec Nation. Today Ottawa is home to approximately forty thousand First Nations Inuit and Métis people. Ottawa's indigenous community is diverse, representing many nations, languages, and customs. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors all First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. We are currently broadcasting on Zoom and live streaming on YouTube. Given this meeting is being held electronically, I want to caution there is a possibility of technical difficulties. Should we receive any disruptions, I would ask that everyone remain patient as we work to fix the issue and resume the meeting just as soon as possible. We have set aside an hour for this meeting with the media availability to follow directly after on this Zoom link. I would ask all panelists to do their best to be concise in either their questions or their comments. If a question is raised which cannot be addressed publicly, the board will have the ability to reconvene in camera following the completion of the media availability. I'll now proceed with the confirmation of the agenda. But the Ottawa Police Services Board confirmed the agenda of February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Is the agenda confirmed? Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, there is only one item of business today. It's such a chief and command update on ongoing demonstrations before Chief, I turn the floor over to you. I do have some opening comments. Let me just start by saying that I'm really happy that it appears the provincial and federal governments have finally woken up and recognized that we're in a national crisis. The occupation of Ottawa has sparked a movement. Supply chains have been impeded. Our economy is being held hostage. Residents terrorized, healthcare workers threatened, schools targeted, and the list goes on. It all has to stop. This nationwide crisis must come to an end. The occupation of our city has to end. To do that, we have heard loud and clear from the Chief of Police that additional resources are urgently and desperately needed. When we say resources, we mean the person power needed to put into action strict enforcement, public order officers, and the like. Earlier this week, the mayor and I requested eighteen hundred additional officers and civilian staff from the RCMP and OPP, along with some local police services. It is up to the premier and the prime minister to deliver those resources as expeditiously as possible. It's important for the board in our role as an oversight body to understand if the OPS has the resources they need to protect our city. We asked that last Saturday, and it remains the most urgent and pressing question for this oversight body today. But we must also recognize that this information is operationally sensitive. I would ask the chief to request that we go in camera to discuss any item he deems operationally sensitive, including questions around resources to receive to date. What I want to focus on today is our residents, the people of our cities whose of our city whose lives have been upended by this illegal occupation, the people who we seek to serve and protect. We have heard so many insidious incidents from arson to assault. We have been promised action, but as we have heard from our chief, we lack the resources to follow through. I know that police are working tirelessly with the resources they have, and there has been some progress. There've been over seventeen hundred tickets issued. There've been at least twenty-five arrests. Police have been working to seize fuel. They've made progress on clamping down on the encampment at Coventry Road and in Confederation Park. But it's not enough. Here is what we need to hear from you today, Chief Lowly. One, how many extra police officers have we received from the federal and provincial governments since the mayor and I made that request on Monday? Can you provide details? Two, what should we expect this weekend? Is there a plan to step up enforcement? With the resources we currently have, how will OPS, one, protect our neighborhoods from further siege? Two, protect our schools and our children from being threatened? And three, protect our citizens from being further terrorized? Chief, I'm hoping you can instill confidence in our city today that we will be able to protect our residents amidst this national crisis. Chief, I'll now turn things over to you and your staff to provide an update on the ongoing demonstrations. And after your update, we'll go straight to questions from board members. Thank you. Over to you, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chair and Board. Good afternoon. Thank you for convening a special meeting. Through this board, we're accountable to the people of Ottawa that we serve and protect both of office that every one of us takes dearly and are fully committed to. We welcome the opportunity to speak with you today about our ongoing efforts to put an end to this unlawful occupation demonstration. Want to be clear that due to ongoing sensitivities with the operation, including public and officer safety, we are limited in what we can share regarding specific operational plans, specific numbers, and specific types of resources and logistics in this public forum. Should the board wish to move in camera to provide to ask more questions in which we can provide more fulsome information, we'll obviously support such a direction from the Chair. Earlier today, the provincial government announced higher penalties and fines to help us bring an end to this unlawful occupation. We welcome these expanded powers. Our team is on standby standby, and as soon as the new provincial orders are in effect, we will brief our officers so that they can begin enforcing the new laws to the fullest extent that our resources allow. We continue to work with our police partners that includes our city partners here, and particularly with federal and provincial governments around our request for additional officers. These conversations remain constructive and positive, and we are hopeful to have more boots on the ground, human beings fully sworn and capable of working under the full deployment of our incident command system as soon as possible. What you see across this country, from Windsor to Sarnia, from Winnipeg to Coots, is not a simple protest. These unlawful demonstrators are executing a very complex, very fluid, and very sophisticated operation. We're doing everything we can with the resources we have to ensure the safety and security of the city while contributing to the larger safety and security of the province and the country. Is my hope with the additional powers announced today and the new resources we are continuing to work on getting from our policing partners that we can bring a safer and swifter lawful end to the illegal demonstration. We're now going into the third weekend of this occupation in the city of Ottawa. We know more unlawful demonstrators are considering coming this weekend. Again, our message to you is do not come. And if you do, and you commit unlawful acts, there will be consequences to the fullest extent possible. The Ottawa Police will continue to deploy our surge, enforce, and contain strategy. We'll continue to harden the downtown core while deploying all available resources under our ability. I know that the residents of Ottawa are angry, and I know that they are tired. I know they want their neighborhoods back and a sense of safety and normalcy. You have suffered, and we will ensure those who are responsible for the unlawful acts face the full consequences. The Ottawa Police Service and our policing partners are doing everything in our power to put an end to this unlawful occupation. We are making progress, but the key to a safer and swifter success is more resources. I want to thank every member of the Ottawa Police Service. You have stepped up in every imaginable way to protect our residents, our businesses, and to keep our city safe. Our city partners, sorry, our city and our service owe you each an immeasurable debt of gratitude. Thank you. I want to thank our residents, the city of Ottawa, led by Steve Katalakis and his team, and all people in the city, whether you have a formal position, elected position, or you're just a neighborhood resident who've worked in some material way to help and support with the successes we have to date. We'll need to continue that level of work together in order to have that safe and swift and lawful end to the unlawful aspects of this demonstration. I will now invite Deputy Chief Bell to provide a more detailed summary of our operational plans and our efforts today. Deputy Bell?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. This weekend, we expect that additional unlawful demonstrators will converge on our downtown core. Our message to those demonstrators has been clear and continues to be the same. Don't come. You're not welcome here. There will be consequences for any illegal activity. Our residents are frustrated and angry. They're fed up with the unlawful occupation and are demanding action. The Ottawa Police Service is better equipped and better resourced to deal with this anticipated influx. We continue to develop our surge and contain strategy, and all available officers will be on duty. Our focus is upholding public safety in neighborhoods adjacent to the red zone. Unlawful activity from spitting on the sidewalk to hate crimes will be strictly enforced. We're continually increasing our policing efforts and tactics as resources become available. Recent and forthcoming increases to fines will further embolden our efforts to charge those who have unlawfully occupied our downtown core. While our focus this weekend is on neighborhood safety, ending the occupation of the red zone is an ongoing priority. Police liaison teams have made some progress reducing this footprint. This weekend, with that work, we'll continue to ensure that it does not grow and in fact shrinks. For Ottawa residents, know that we're doing everything in our power to keep your neighborhood safe and put an end to this unlawful occupation. This weekend, we will once again deploy traffic control measures, including the sporadic closures of highway off-ramps and provincial bridges as needed. We continue to remind all Ottawa residents who have witnessed or are victim of a crime to please report it. Every report is being thoroughly investigated. Thank you.
Anything further, Chief, before we go to questions?
Take any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, I had outlined some in my original statement. Maybe we'll go to questions from board members and see if they cover those or if you want to offer any comments about my questions before we go to questions from the board.
I'm in your hands, Chair.
Can you discuss the specifics of resources, Chief?
No, I'm not able to do so in this forum, Chair. You've heard from Deputy Bell that we've continued to try to increase our ability to access resources and use them as effectively as possible. You know, from your efforts and their efforts to seek additional resources, our request of eighteen hundred resources, seventeen hundred officers, and a hundred civilians, we're still working with the OPP and the RCMP to to receive those resources and deploy them. That's all we can mention of this forum. Thank you.
Okay. Perhaps I'll suggest that at the end of the meeting, after the media veil, we go in camera to see if we can have some specifics. Member King?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the challenge that besets Ottawa is definitely unprecedented. This so-called demonstration rapidly transformed into an illegal occupation, which has completely disrupted the lives of our residents and our businesses, holding the city hostage. So I'm really pleased, which you noted in your first statement, that the premier has declared a state of emergency today to give police more tools and resources to stop the illegal occupation. And we're pleased that the premier has indicated that there will be severe consequences for those involved in this illegal occupation and that there will be operational support in an effort to strengthen the tools and resources necessary to restore public order. I'm also very pleased that the city's legal counsel on behalf of the city of Ottawa today said that they sought an appearance before the Ontario Supreme Court of Justice for purposes of obtaining an injunction in respect to the bylaw violations arising out of the ongoing protests. City staff has informed us that this action is an effort to restrain the observed widespread disregard by many of those involved in the demonstration, in the occupation, for the rule of law and for multiple bylaw enacted to promote the health, safety, and well-being of residents and visitors, and to enhance the economic, social, environmental well-being of the municipality. Can the chief, in light of all these developments, can the chief tell us what the expected additional powers the police service can bring to bear under the declared provincial state of emergency to address the illegal occupiers?
Chair, through you, Member King, we are still waiting for the full description of all the new powers that were enacted provincially. Once we receive them, our legal services team is already prepared to put whatever efforts are needed through the afternoon, the evening, and into the early morning hours to then translate those regulations into actionable enforcement items that our officers can be briefed on. Once they're briefed, they will immediately start enforcing those new regulations and those powers to full extent, to the fullest extent that our resources allow us to do so.
Sorry about that. So ultimately, we have to wait for after cabinet has convened and has provided enacted specific orders for you to be able to take action. Okay. The other question I have is, do we have sufficient support for the city's bylaw enforcement officers to undertake ticketing operations under the potential of new court injunctions that could be approved?
I will speak for Kim Ayat and Steve Katalakis. One of the challenges we have had ever since the onset of this demonstration occupation, particularly the unsafe unlawful elements of it, is our ability to safely intervene and interdict and enforce at any of the three levels of legislation, municipal, provincial, and federal. That remains a challenge to the state. It is one of the challenges around staffing and resourcing that we sought to alleviate through the request for resources. So again, we will do the fullest extent of enforcement with our partner agencies, including city bylaw, that our resources allow and that the new legislation enables.
Thank you for that, Chief, and the other questions that I have are more, I suppose, operational in nature. So I'll save those for the in-camera session. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member King. Member Smallwood.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, Chief. I appreciate the stress and strain your team is under and I I know this is a challenging time for all of us. I was downtown today and I noticed that the the sounds of horns honking seemed to be dramatically reduced. But the one thing I noticed was, and it's just a horrific stench of diesel in the air. And I just can't imagine how people can, people who live in that community in the center core can tolerate that. It's got to be tremendously unhealthy. My question, which I know has been asked many times, and I know that Councillor King just mentioned it, but but I just don't understand why a twenty-one-year-old was able to get an injunction on the horn honking, which seems to have had some effect over a week ago. And yet we're still talking about perhaps getting an injunction. And my fear is, is that there seems to be some reason why, why, why this young person was able to go get it very quickly. But and maybe this isn't a question for you. Maybe this is a question for legal counsel. But I'm really concerned that we're talking about injunctions. They seem to, the one on the horn seemed to have an effect. Can we, there must be something we can do to ensure that we get an injunction against these idling of trucks and and the harassment that's going on in the streets immediately, not in another week or so. Thank you very much, Chair and Chief.
Chair, through you, to Vice Chair Smallwood, thank you. Once we, even before this demonstration and occupation arrived, and the city identified an injunction as a possible outcome, sorry, a possible tool that we could use to get a successful outcome. I directed General Counsel Christian, you know, to reach out to David White in the city to start discussions around how we would even begin to make an application. That was before a single trucker demonstrator arrived in the city. And we've worked continuously with the city ever since then. Ultimately, your question should be directed to the city legal, and it's the city's decision around a city injunction. But we have made ourselves available, proactively reached out to the city to start the process and made ourselves fully available, even before a single demonstrator or truck arrived in the city. That's as much as I can answer from an Ottawa police standpoint, and the city to comment further on the status of the injunction and their intent to pursue that to the fullest extent possible.
Thank you, Chief and Chair. I know that David White made a statement saying that he, virtually a mirror statement, saying he was all ready to go and just waiting for the police. So I am a little concerned that we seem to be, everybody's ready to go and nobody's going. So maybe, I don't know if David White is on the call, but I'm sure the residents would like to get this resolved so that it's not caught in limbo, which it appears to be. Thank you, Chair.
David, are you on the call?
Hi, Chair. This is Hannah. Unfortunately, David White wasn't able to join the call, nor was Glenn Christie.
Okay, I would then agree to take that question to David White and try and get a written answer for you, Members Smallwood, and I'll circulate it to the board. Okay, anything further, Members Smallwood? Thank you, Member Norman.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for having this meeting today, and thanks, Chief. First of all, let me see, yeah. So one of the good Samaritan, Zachy Lee, brought the injection application in Ottawa Court, prohibiting the defendants or any other party spent in the ongoing convoy protest from using vehicle horns in the vicinity of downtown Ottawa. It is a duty called above and beyond as private citizen to the relief of thousands concerned, and I wish to personally thank Miss Lee and to her legal team for their efforts in this direction. Chief and Deputy Chief Bell, my question to you is, in regard to the city already declared state of emergency, and today Province of Ontario, Ontario has declared the same. How easy or difficult it would be for the OPS with the given resources to enforce the rule of law in our city?
Chair, through you, to Member Norman, has responded already. We have been enforcing all the laws available to us, including the new powers under the civil injunction. Our ability to enforce it fully is a direct proportion to our ability to have additional resources. The new powers are, give us new tools, but without new resources, we can't enforce it to any greater degree more than we've been able to do so now. So our ongoing efforts to negotiate a reduction in the amount of trucks, amount of demonstrators, the physical space they take up, and therefore the resources required to maintain safety around the red zone allows us to move officers into other duties, including but not limited to enforcing the laws that are available to us. That is the process that we've undertaken as quickly as we can. But clearly, we cannot go beyond our current ability unless we get new resources. New powers are new powers. Without new resources, we can't expand and use those powers in the way that they were designed. So we continue to work with all three levels of government to seek new powers. We've supported the city's attempt at an injunction, and of course, the city will speak for itself later on. But we've been, we were the ones that reached out in the first instance, and we've continued to provide full supports to my general counsel and my legal services team to the city from the very start of our efforts to get that underway. We've continued to work with all three levels of government to get as many resources as we can, including recommendations for legislative change municipally, provincially, and federally. And we continue to do so at the provincial and federal levels. That has been my efforts, along with Steve Katalakis, representing the city. And I continue to work on a daily basis, along with my team, with our provincial and federal counterparts, our municipal counterparts, to get more officers and more resources to come to the city. In fact, the meeting I had just before arriving here, which made me a few minutes late, was exactly that purpose. A province-wide meeting of police chiefs, identifying all the areas that this demonstration has hit, from Coots to Windsor to Sarnia to Toronto, and of course, right here in Ottawa. So it's been a hundred percent effort, literally twenty-four hours a day. We are absolutely stretched and maxed out on the resources we can apply. Every single resource that we have available is providing policing for the demonstration or policing for the city of a million people.
Thank you, Chief. So if I have corrected, if I've understood correctly, in spite of these mayors by the city, province, until and unless you have the enough resources, it would be a deterrent in giving the relief to the city which is under siege. Am I correct?
I'm not sure if I understood the last part of the question, Member Norman.
So my, my, okay, I will rephrase it. So meaning that you, to enforce those orders and the rule of law, to give relief to the residents of Ottawa, you definitely need the requested resources. And until and unless they are into your hands, it would be a deterrent in moving quickly to give the relief. Am I correct?
No, if I understood your reframing of the question, the new powers enacted by, being enacted by the province will be of assistance. We will enforce them to the extent that our resources allow us to. But there won't be the fullest extent of that new set of legislation without additional resources. So to the extent we have resources, we'll use the new powers to, as another tool around ending the unlawful and unsafe aspects of this demonstration as quickly and as safely and as lawfully as possible. The more resources we get, the more we can do.
Got it. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chair. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Member Norman. Member Suede.
Thank you, Chair, and Chief. Thank you to you for your endurance and the members of the OPS and all police services involved. Chief, we've seen this protest in Ottawa grow from just being an Ottawa problem to a province-wide, nationwide, and international issue. The Premier of Ontario was just asked today by reporters, now that he declared a state of emergency, what if it doesn't work? What's next? And I'm paraphrasing a bit, but he responded that he has faith in our police service, and he emphasized that he cannot direct the police. This is also the case as board members. We cannot direct the police as well. Chief, you just said, in Ontario in particular, there are protests currently underway in Ottawa and in several areas like downtown and at the yesterday at the airport, in Windsor and the Ambassador Bridge, in Sarnia and the Blue Water, the Blue Water Bridge, and Toronto is preparing for a large protest this weekend. I have two questions for you. When looking at what is happening across Canada and the world, do you think this is still a small minority of people, or is it much bigger than we originally estimated? And second, a little bit of a twist to what was already asked before. Do you still think we have enough resources for Ottawa specifically, given that protests are popping up across Ontario and services will be needed in other areas as well?
Chair, through you, to Member Suede. Appreciate the question. I don't have any ability to estimate the number of people directly involved in supporting in whatever manner, either by way of financial, logistical, or just ideological alignment. Nor do I have any way to accurately assess the number of ideologies directly or indirectly related to this, except to say there are a wide variety of people with a wide variety of ideologies and perspectives and concerns, axes to grind, who have attacked themselves in various ways at various times, some benign and some violent and criminal. And that literally changes, has changed day by day from when this convoy started in British Columbia to its current state here today. We certainly have indications that this is, as I've stated repeatedly, and you've stated in your own way, this is a local, provincial, national, and international movement. Money and logistics and supports have clearly been demonstrated to come from, from local here in Ottawa and from as far afield as other countries. And that is why it is one of the most complex, fluid, and difficult to manage events that police leaders have ever been involved with here in this province. In regards to your second question, are there enough resources? We have made do with everything we possibly can here in Ottawa. Cancel days off. We've renegotiated shift schedules going from six schedules down to four. What does that mean? Instead of an officer working ten hours a day, they work twelve hours a day. Instead of having more days off, they have less days off. We are now sending and ordering people home who've worked sixteen, seventeen, eighteen days. I'm on day nineteen. Tomorrow will be day twenty. We have done everything we possibly can with great cooperation from the board. I will say unexpected but strong cooperation from the Ottawa Police Association around negotiation of shift schedules and the enablement of canceling the days off. I give huge credit to our CIO Blair Dunker for leading the charge in that area to enable those extra, few extra resources to be squeezed out of those last ditch efforts. We don't have any other tricks to pull out of our back pocket to get more Ottawa Police Service officers available. The only thing that we have been able to do and continue to be able to do is to reduce the number of trucks, demonstrators, the size and nature of the demonstration so that we can free up as many scarce resources and redeploy them as quickly and as effectively against the enforcement and other protective aspects that you've heard us articulate over the last seventeen to nineteen days. While we do that, we ramp down during the week, and we ramp up on the weekends for the demonstrations that swell the numbers. And we try to do that in real time based on often last minute, if not absent intelligence as to what's coming, the nature of what's coming, the risks associated to what's coming. And now this week, we do that while trying to negotiate. And now this week, we do that while trying to negotiate and coordinate and de-conflict with police services across this province who themselves are experiencing or preparing for demonstrations that are occurring in their jurisdictions. So that has added a layer of drain on potential resources, a layer of complexity on an already incredibly, incredibly complex local situation. And simple requests now that we've made this week to provincial and federal counterparts are now being met with multiple other requests from multiple other jurisdictions for similar resources to come to their areas. That's the situation that we're in right now. We've done as much as we can with what we have. We will do as much as we can with whatever other tools or resources come our way, and we will do everything we can as we have done from the very first day to bring about the safest and swiftest and most lawful end to this unlawful and unsafe demonstration taking place in the city.
Thank you for your answer, Chief, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Sueta. Member Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the commanding members that are here to answer our questions and provide this, this update. So my first question is, there have been a lot of very disturbing reports of harassment since the beginning of the protest on January 28th, 2022 of people and businesses in our city of Ottawa. Is the Ottawa Police prepared to protect citizens in the area the protest in specifically? Because I think it needs to be said, the BIPOC and LGBTQ, TQ2 plus communities, their allies, as well as small businesses in the impact area? And if not, what do we need to do to turn that into a yes?
Chair three to Member Johnson, thank you for your question, Member Johnson. We have been protecting as best we can everybody in the city to the best of our ability with the resources to the fullest extent that we have. That has been there from the beginning and will continue to the end. And beyond that, as we continue to protect those who have been victimized by holding those who did the victimizing to account. I will turn things over to Deputy Bell for him to give you an update on what we've got in terms of hate-related incidents and ongoing criminal investigations and any associated results to date. Deputy Bell?
Thank you, Chief. Through the chair to Member Johnson, thank you for the question. So right from day one, we've been encouraging people to report incidents of harassment. We've gone steps beyond that over the last number of weeks. And that's what we outlined a week ago today around our surge and contain strategy to, to look at how we protect those neighborhoods from the ongoing activities of, of the people occupying our streets. The threats that are being demonstrated towards the members of our community, we're taking exceptionally seriously and actually deploying resources within those neighborhoods to specifically look to prevent those occurrences from occurring, prevent those interactions from occurring, and rebuild trust and confidence and feelings of safety and security for our residents. To that end, we know that over the course since the occupation has started, we've had over 150 reports of criminal incidents. We thoroughly, we have teams that are assigned and thoroughly investigate those. And to date, we've had 25 people charged with incidents relating to criminal activity associated with the demonstration. We couldn't take those threats more seriously. The feelings of desperation that some of our community members feel, we know, we appreciate, and we are doing everything in our power to make sure the resources on the ground are there to provide the safety and security that every member of our city deserves.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Deputy Bell. That does provide us with a lot of information today on the search and control program as well as the details of how you're responding to the hate crimes. And I thank you for that information. My next question really builds on a question by Member Sueta. And as a board member, and we are on day 14 of this protest demonstration, call it a siege as the Premier did today, we need to ensure the OPS officers work reasonable hours and that the OPS is fully staffed to be effective in ending this Ottawa demonstration. And I guess really what I'm asking you, and you did tell us that some, you're sending home officers on day 17 and you yourself are on chief on day 19. Are the officers tired as a result of these many hours of work? Thank you.
Chair again, through you to Member Johnson, first and foremost, as others have, let us recognize again the people that are tired the most and traumatized the most, the people that are the most vulnerable and most victimized, and those that live closest to any aspect of the demonstration. And, and, and many of those have lost employment, livelihood, and maybe much more than that. Yes, every single one of our members, not just our officers, are bone tired. I don't think there's a meeting that's started in the last seven days that didn't start with some sort of a specific and explicit wellness check in with each other. Our members have suffered violence and psychological trauma. Many of our members, including myself, have been the victims of criminal acts. And we are continuing to do everything we can to support each other while providing the best police services possible. We are to the point where we're literally having to order people to put pens down, put their patrol uniforms off and go home and unplug, sleep for 24 or 48 hours and come back in as best as they can. So we have a significant health and wellness issue while we have a significant unsafe and unlawful demonstration going on and unending to this point unlawful demonstration going on. We are out of options except to keep working our people as hard as they can. They have chosen, they have chosen to continue to work as hard as they can to keep the city as safe as possible and as well served as possible. And again, I would extend that to our city of Ottawa partners. There are many other people from transportation to roads to bylaw. I'm sure if Kim Ayotte was on here, he would give you his own impassioned assessment of the length and depth and effort of city workers in support of our efforts here. And I would include our partners from federal, provincial, and municipal police agencies who are working alongside of us. So I don't know if that answers your question, Member Johnson, but that's the best I can give you right now.
It does. I do have a follow-up question. And I just thought I'd make a comment to that, you know, I am hopeful that the provincial order today will, will really help to ensure that, and you spoke to the, the residents as a priority, and I share your priority. So I do hope that the order today will allow residents and businesses return to life as usual soon. So, so really my follow-up question to that is, are we doing everything as a board to, I mean, the resources aside, which we're going to be discussing further in camera, are we doing everything as a board to support the wellness of the OPS members? Are there additional other services that you need?
Again, Chair, thank you through to Member Johnson. Actually, I hadn't thought about that one. I think it's an important question. I would extend it first to CIO Blair Dunker, who oversees her health and wellness programs. If she feels there's any immediate resources at the board, if I understand your question, is there anything more that the board can do to assist our members with their health and wellness during this difficult time? I'll give the first response opportunity to our CEO. Blair? Not, not hearing you, Blair. You're apparent unmuted on our screen here. Okay, looks like, looks like we have a challenge, a tech challenge. If I could take that as an inquiry.
I think she's unmuted. One sec. Blair, try again.
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't have control for that. Um, I think we have, you know, the necessary provisions within the service at this point to help members, and we're certainly building on those. What I would say is it's more support that they might hear from you and in the public and anything that could be said to, you know, continue to encourage them. Because as, as you noted, Member Johnson, you know, they, they are very tired. And, you know, they don't have enough support currently, and they've moved to these 12-hour shifts, et cetera. So I think hearing encouragement from, from everyone wherever possible would be one of the most important things for them to hear. In terms of particular programs, I think we have, we do remind the members of what's available and who they can call and how they can get support. So I think at this point, we're, we're probably okay there.
Okay. Thank you, CEO Dunker, and certainly a good reminder to all officers that and members of the OPS, there's no shame in reaching out for these tools, really. It's a difficult job, long hours. You know, the tools are there. Please, no shame, just please access them. And I'll certainly, you know, provide my gratitude and appreciation to all the members of the OPS service for all that you are doing to the leadership team, for all of the difficult decisions you are making during this demonstration, protest, demonstration, siege in Ottawa that began on January 28th, 2022. And we also, you know, the decision, this is layered on top of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, so, you know, I, I offer my gratitude and thank everyone for all that they are doing. And back over to Chair Deans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Johnson. Member Meehan.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the Command, Senior Command, and to you, Chief. Chief, you know, this afternoon, the Prime Minister held a presser, much like Premier Ford did this morning. But he said in that, and I want to get this right, and I'm quoting from a tweet that John Willing from the Ottawa Citizen said, the Prime Minister said, and I quote, "I don't accept the contention that Ottawa has exhausted its tools and resources in terms of this protest, this unlawfulness." I'm wondering if you can respond to that?
Chair three to Member Meehan. Thank you, Member Meehan. I haven't heard the Prime Minister's comments, so I can't respond to it.
He's suggesting that we haven't exhausted our, our toolkit or our resources. Surely you can respond to that. Is he right? Is he not right?
I'm afraid I haven't heard his comments, ma'am, and I won't take third-hand information. I've explained the resources to this board today, and I've kept the board up to speed on what we have and what we're able to do with them. So I, I'll stand by our previous briefing that we've given to the board today.
Thank you for that. I would suggest if, that it's probably true, but it's not, the comments are not really helpful at this point. Chief, we're, we're told that we're expecting, and I guess some trucks are already rolling into town, that there's going to be a surge of demonstrators on our streets. We're also looking at a possible counter protest at Lansdowne Park tomorrow afternoon. Is, is there any way that we can keep those numbers down? Can, can we employ anyone at this point to, you know, to stop people who are obviously coming into town for, to join this protest? Can we, can we keep them out of the city in any way? And are there plans in place to deal with that counter protest tomorrow in case it, you know, there's going to be a clash of some sort? And I, and I hope there won't be.
Yep, thank you. I invite Deputy Chief Bell in a second. I will say that on a call earlier today with the Chair and the Mayor and downtown councillors and city staff, there were discussions around how to help to mitigate some of the risk associated to the counter protest. There were actions that were taken away from that table by, by several parties. In regards to the larger demonstrations, the, again, we were literally just part of, Deputy Bell and I were just part of a provincial, national discussion on the demonstrations that are planned for here, the GTA, Southern Ontario, and the Windsor/Sarnia area. Intelligence was shared in real time. Numbers were shared and resources were coordinated and de-conflicted. That is happening literally on an hour-by-hour basis, everything that we can do. It includes sharing of best practices and lessons learned. So we continue to look at what has been relatively effective in other jurisdictions with similar challenges and done our best in real time to consider how we could implement those techniques here. And in fact, literally coming out of the last meeting, there were some indications of, of, of more proven success factors that we will, Deputy Bell is undertaking to consider to implement in what our current planning is for the weekend. So that is literally happening on a, on an hour-by-hour, day-by-day basis. We saw a significant reduction from the first weekend and the second weekend. That is our goal to see another significant reduction this weekend. But a lot of circumstances, as you know, have changed even from last weekend to this weekend. Changes here locally, changes provincially, changes nationally.
So to understand, I'm not sure what the answer is then. We can't prevent people from coming into the city and joining this protest?
If you're asking for a literal, a literal answer to your literal question, we can't prevent 100% of the people coming into a city this size for any protest, this one or any other one. And I don't think the law would provide for that either. Logistically, resource-wise, we couldn't do it from a charter and legal standpoint. We wouldn't be allowed to do it. We're doing our very best to deter and prevent people who are coming here to commit unlawful acts and to, to hold those to account who do come here to commit on, and commit unlawful acts to the account we can. That is, again, dependent on the amount of resources that we can, is the level of effectiveness around which we can do that.
Thank you, Chief. A lot of people are wondering why we don't give the, the, the people who are still occupying the downtown core and who seem bent on disrupting the residents' lives downtown, why don't we give them a deadline to leave and, and with the threat of now we have these penalties and possible jail time for people who are, are breaking the law downtown? What a deadline, we've never given them a deadlines so far. Is that a consideration at all? And, you know, tell them that we're, we're going to go in with some force at some point? I guess, I'm just asking, I guess, on behalf of residents who are frustrated that they seem, the protesters seem to be running the show. So without talking operationally, of course, we'll discuss that in camera, but is there any talk of deadlines, any talk of cutting off supply, you know, lines for food, for fuel, that kind of thing?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Just before I answer that question, is it possible? I think Blair Dunker is having trouble getting invited as a panelist, and that's preventing some of her ability to communicate. So through you to, to Member Meehan. So we announced very early on that we were going after supply and supports to the unlawful aspects of the demonstration and, and through the direct efforts of, of this police service supported by the, the city, we're able to eliminate the GoFundMe, some $10 million of assets. And we've had other significant successes around eliminating the supply of funding. You've heard again, repeated briefings that we have gone after the supply of fuel and have had a measure of success, but not a complete success for all the reasons we've talked about again. Being able to shut off one area, two or three others pop up, being able to control one aspect of ingress of those fuel tankers. We don't have enough resources to create a complete circle around the entire area. So we've had a measure of success, but not complete success. We continue to make those efforts as, as much as we can, and as soon as we have resources freed up, we, we continue those efforts. I'm not aware of any jurisdiction in Canada that has established deadlines and timelines for the end of what they're experiencing from Coots to Windsor to Sarnia and to here. Every police chief is trying to say, we'll bring it as quickly as possible to a safe and as lawful possible end. Depending on the resources and local circumstances, and so we're no different from any other jurisdiction.
I think I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chief.
Are there any other questions from board members? Okay, Chief, I just wondered, I know you, some of the questions I posed right off the top, you want to answer in Cameron, that's fine, and I know some of them were. And I know some of them were covered in questions from the board members. But I just wonder if specifically you could speak about the fanning out to different neighborhoods that we're seeing? And also this risk to children in schools that we're seeing emerging? And if you can share any plans that you have for addressing those issues?
Thank you very much. I'll ask Deputy Bell to talk about the locations that are, locations and activities that are beyond what we've been speaking about in the red zone and Coventry Park. I think those are well-known locations. But I'll ask him to provide a broader understanding of the variety of locations and activities associated to those locations that, that we can reasonably determine our base as part of, directly part of the demonstration or in support of the demonstration. Deputy Bell?
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chair, for your question. So we continue, as we've indicated from the beginning, we continue to work with our partners to receive updated intelligence information. We continue to spend time scanning social media, observing the activity of those involved in, in the illegal occupation. What, a couple of the phenomenas that we've seen are exactly what you, what you discussed. We've seen a phenomenon yesterday of what was determined as a slow roll, where protesters, demonstrators drive around city streets at a slow pace in order to look to interfere with traffic patterns. We continue to look at methods to apply enforcement towards that, particularly as it relates to blocking up streets. You, it is illegal to block streets and not allow the passage of emergency vehicles. So we've applied resources towards that to look at how we can have enforcement efforts in tho, in those areas. The other area you talked about specifically was around schools and threats to schools. I can tell you to date, I know that there was social media information that was passed on that schools may be one of the targets. We haven't seen that materialize to this point, although we have received some calls for service in the downtown core where the, the occupation and demonstration, pro-demonstration comes up and butts close to school areas. We've applied resources in a preventative capacity to those areas, as well as have responded to those calls for service and initiated investigations around those. Both of those issues are new and emerging areas that we're beginning, beginning to see and beginning to place enforcement strategies around and ones that we take extremely serious.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Are there any further questions? Same one. This concludes our special meeting for today. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on February 28th, although at 4 o'clock. Although I do anticipate that there will be further special board meetings between now and the 28th. We will be taking a 15-minute recess before the media availability. So the media availability will begin at 4:10. And then we will go to an in-camera board meeting. Let's see, say at 4:45, join for the in-camera meeting at 4:45. Can I have a motion to, oh, Chief, go ahead.
Sorry, Chair, and it may be on, on my end, but I wasn't advised of the media availability. I thought we're going right into in-camera. I have a full operational briefing at 5 o'clock, and it cannot be changed in terms of the timing. And I'm very concerned that media and then in-camera discussions will not allow me and my command team to focus on the operational priorities. So I don't know what to do. I've, I've only just become aware of the timing you just talked about. I, I couldn't personally commit to that right now, and I don't know what you can do in real time to make adjustments. But we have to have our 5 o'clock briefing. The entire command team needs to be on it.
Okay, so is John Steinbeck on the line? Because I believe it was John Steinbeck that set up the media availability. Oh, somebody's hands up. Is that Hannah or Krista?
Hi, it is Hannah. I don't believe John Steinbeck is on the line currently. However, I will give him a call right away here and see, because I do believe that is the plan he had set out for us.
Is he in the office, Chief?
We're trying to locate him right now, Chair.
Okay. I mean, we can tighten it up and do a shorter media veil and a shorter in-camera session. So we could go to a media veil, let's say, at 4:05. Maybe keep it to 4:20 and then do the in-camera meeting at 4:20. Oh, John, John, you're there, so go ahead.
Oh, pardon me, sorry, Chair. Yes, John here. Yeah, as requested, the council meeting earlier this week, we're holding a media availability. I believe we were aiming at 4:10, just for some technical issues. We'll be on there, answer some media questions, and then we can come back to anything you guys need.
Okay, Chief's just expressing concern about the timeframe because of a command meeting or a meeting that is required at 5:00. So we'll try, we'll do the media vote 4:10, we'll keep it short. And then we will keep a short in-camera meeting, Chief, to free you up for, in your timeframe.
Thank you, Chair.
Fair enough. Okay, okay, motion to adjourn? For small words. Okay, Carrie, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your day and stay safe. Sebastian, I think we're all here now. Maybe we're ready to go.
Yes, I'll get us started. Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Bonjour à toutes et à tous. Thank you for joining us with the media availability on today's Police Services Board meeting. My name is Sebastian Tremblay, and I will be your moderator. Before we begin, a reminder to place your microphone on mute until I invite you to ask your question. Available for questions from the media we have. Councillor Diane Deans, Chair of the Ottawa Police Service Board. Ottawa Police Service Chief Peter Slowley. Deputy Chief of the Ottawa Police Service, Steve Bell. Kim Ayat, General Manager of Emergency and Protective Services. And for responsive questions in French. I will now invite questions from each agency alphabetically. You may ask one question each. Those media who did not have an opportunity to ask questions that, yes, it is media availability, will be going first, however. Well, now start with, we're gonna come on, see, I bet. Riza Patel from the Toronto Star, and after we will go to Milene Crete à la presse.
Hi there, my question is for Chief Slowly. This afternoon, Prime Minister Justin Trudeau said he did not accept the contention that the city of Ottawa had exhausted its tools and resources. He said Ottawa Police have been given resources from both the OPP and the RCMP. What is your response to the Prime Minister who is saying that you do have the resources that you need?
Thank you very much for your question, Riza. We continue to have constructive discussions with my OPP and RCMP counterparts. Commissioner Brenda Lucky from the RCMP, Commissioner Tom Corrick from the OPP. In fact, we just had a call this afternoon with all the chiefs of police from across Ontario, as well as the OPP and the RCMP, looking at all the different locations where the demonstrations are taking place, from Windsor to Ottawa, from Coots to Sarnia, as well as the planned demonstration in the GTA. Trying to coordinate resource requirements for each of those areas, including the demonstration, occupation, unlawful and unsafe that it is here in the nation's capital in Ottawa.
Thank you for your question, Riza. We will now go to Milene Crete à la presse, and after we will go to Jadrino UO avec 14 points 9 rouge FM.
Chief Slowly, you had additional resources from the RCMP and the OPP. How many more officers are you still needing at this point?
Thank you very much. Again, my, my answer is, as was previous, we continue to have constructive and productive discussions with the Ontario Provincial Police and the RCMP, other Big 12 police services in Ontario around resource sharing, intelligence sharing, coordination, deconfliction for the multiple sites of demonstrations around the province and across the country.
Thank you for your question. On voit maintenant à Jadrino UO avec 14 points 9 rouge FM. And we will go, then go to Mia Robson with the Canadian Press. I suppose that we know, can we go to Mia Robson with the Canadian Press? I don't see Mia either. So can we please go to Josh Pringle with CTV Ottawa? And after that, we will go to Kevin Gallagher with CTV National News.
Thank you very much for my question. Chief, has any additional resources arrived in Ottawa since your request on Monday? And what will happen if you do not get more resources in the next 24, 48, 72 hours?
Thank you very much for your question, Josh. As of this point, with the ongoing constructive and positive discussions with the OPP and the RCMP, we are still not in a position to hear a definitive answer as to what additional resources will come to Ottawa. Regardless, we will continue to use the resources we have in place. And again, we're grateful for those agencies, including the OPP and the RCMP, who've provided resources. We'll continue to use the resources we have, the resources we've been able to acquire to keep the city as safe as we possibly can and to reduce, if not end, the demonstration as safely and as swiftly and as lawfully as we possibly can.
Thank you for your question, Josh. We will now go to Kevin Gallagher with CTV National News. And after, we will go to Christie Kirkup with Global News Ottawa. I don't see Kevin Gallagher on there. Can we go to Christie Kirkup at the Globe and Mail?
Thanks for the opportunity. Just quickly, Chief Slowly, I know you've talked about the expectation of an influx of demonstrators coming to the cities this weekend and have encouraged folks to stay home. Can you give us any sense of the magnitude of the number of additional demonstrators that may be coming into the downtown core over the course of the next couple of days?
Thank you for your quest, your question, Christie. As of right now, the intelligence that we have, including ongoing efforts of police liaison with the organizers that we can identify and who are willing to share information, we feel that the total number of trucks and demonstrators should be in the range of last weekend. That said, there are multiple other planned demonstrations, which I referenced already, from Windsor to Sarnia, through to the GTA and other locations. There is a lot of information, there is a lot of misinformation, and there's a lot of disinformation. But we're tracking that in real time with the intelligence operations across the province and across the country. And should we get more clarity on the numbers, we'll make adjustments as best we can, given the resources we can.
Thank you for your question. We will now go to Joan Chanelo with CBC Ottawa. And after that, we will go to John Willing with the Ottawa Citizen.
Sorry, I told you to myself there. Thanks for your time. I know, Chief, obviously you have other things to do. And I apologize, because I think people have asked this a million times in different ways, but I'm going to try to ask it again. And I think it's because we heard you, Chief, on Monday, say you needed 1,800 more people to help resolve this. You put that out there in the public, and I understand you can't say exactly what you're doing every moment of the day. Things have to be secret. But for the public, they're hearing, wow, you need a lot more people. That's almost double the complement, or more than the complement of, of officers you already have. So if you live here, you think you need a lot more help. And, and maybe, Chief, I'd like to hear from you. And also, maybe Diane, you could answer, because you wrote a letter on Monday to other leaders in the country to say, this is what we need. Five days later, I think the public would like some idea of what that response is. And then, and, and maybe you can't tell me the exact numbers, I understand that. But, you know, is it, you know, Diane, did you get a response from your letter, other than it's passed on? Or, you know, is there some sense you can give us that, yeah, you're going to have enough, right? I mean, maybe you're not going to have all 1,800. But I think that 1,800 number is hanging out there in, in the public. And we'd like to know if that is something that is going to be supported by the province and by the feds.
Well, maybe I'll, I'll answer first and let the, the Chief take it over from there. We were very clear, based on the information provided to us by the Chief of Police, what the resource requirement is here, without offering details, because it's operational. And I, I don't actually even have all of the details. But I do know that we do not have the resource requirement that we have asked for at this point. And personally, I, you know, I know that the Prime Minister is under a great deal of pressure right now. But I thought his comments this afternoon were a little unfair. That I just think that when our Chief of Police has been saying quite clearly, we need more resources. If he believes we have enough, he should point to how that is in fact the case. And, you know, I think there's a lot of people that think the federal government have been late to recognizing this is a national crisis. I think they're getting up to speed now. But I don't think, you know, suggesting that the Ottawa Police Service has enough resources right now, it is, is what he should be doing. Because we are clearly hearing from the Chief that we need more help.
Joan, thank you for your question. We will now go to John Willing with the Ottawa Citizen. And after that, we will go to Charles Antoine Gagnon avec le droit.
Thanks, Seb. Chair Deans, do you continue to have the confidence? Do you continue to have confidence in the Ottawa Police Executive Command to manage this protest as we enter the third week?
Yeah, I, I have confidence. What we keep hearing is they need more help. And my job as the Chair of the Board that provides an oversight function is to do all that I can to get them the resources that they need. They have been working very hard under very stressful circumstances. The officers, everyone in OPS is extremely tired. This has gone on for 16 days now, with right now no end in sight. And they need help and resources. And so, you know, that's what we've been focusing on, trying to get them the help and the resources that they need to do the job that we are asking them to do. A very difficult job.
Thank you for your question, John.
All right, how, you've talked, Chief Slowly, a lot about how volatile the protests can be. How does that impede in the work of your officers to do their job, just not to ignite something?
Thank you very much for your question. Volatility, complexity, and sophistication are all elements of why this has been a uniquely challenging and unprecedented demonstration, occupation. Again, I'll, I'll use words and terms that others have used. It's a national movement. It's a siege. You heard the premier use that term. And so this is not a traditional playbook exercise that any police service would have. We're learning from each other in real time. We're learning from each other in real time, we're making adjustments in real time as we share intelligence, but we're also seeing a very capable. Core group of demonstrators, those who are most responsible, I believe, for the unlawful activity. Being able to make adjustments in real time themselves. Through a sophisticated command, control and communication process of funding and 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 supply. Process that we very rarely see, if ever, in the Canadian police in context. So we continue to do our very best, we utilize our resources to the very best, we share information, intelligence and and best practices. In the quickest, most effective way possible, all with a commitment here in Ottawa and in other police jurisdictions. To bring to an end as quickly as possible, as safely and as lawfully as possible, all the elements of this unlawful demonstration.
Thank you. And after that, we will go to Laura Osman at the Canadian Press.
Bonjour, hi, so Chief Slowly, I have a question for you today. I don't remember exactly when you said this, probably last week or so. You said that there might not be a policing solution into this situation, into this protest. As of today, do you still have that same opinion that there is no policing solution in the crisis? Regarding what is being said on the federal level of the government and also at Queen's Park and here in Ottawa.
Thank you, again, just to be clear, my comments were that there might not be a policing solution for the entirety of the situation. Irrespective, we've continued to do our very best to to provide policing solutions to the unsafe and unlawful elements that are in. Involved in this demonstration locally here in Ottawa. I think by now, everyone realizes that this has gone far beyond Ottawa and from Alberta to. Manitoba to across Ontario to Quebec. I understand there have been demonstrations in eastern Canada as well. So that is a context of my comments from over a week ago. That is the context of what police commanders are dealing with across this country, federally, provincially and municipally. I remain focused on my requirements here as Chief of Police. To serve and protect the city and to deal with unsafe and unlawful elements, including what this demonstration and occupation. Represents and to use all resources and capabilities to do just that. We've done that from the beginning and will continue to do that until the very end.
Thank you, we will now go to Laura Osman at the Canadian Press.
Thanks so much, I just wanted to ask briefly about this injunction. Throughout the last week and a bit, councillors have been asking a lot about the potential for an injunction. And the city solicitors seem to be suggesting that it just wasn't something that the police service was recommending. And so my question is, now that the city is pursuing one, whether this is something that you think will be helpful? And what it might allow you to accomplish?
Laura, actually, the city's legal team will be providing information on this to council at a special council meeting on Monday. And we'll have more information on that for you then. And that concludes today's media availability.